Well, first of all, thank you all for coming tonight. Kind of a dream come true for not only myself, but a lot of people here in Fergus Falls. I'd like to open up the evening with a Marine Combat Veteran saying, "I pledge allegiance." If we'd all stand and join him.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. How we're going to do this tonight is basically you, the people, are going to dictate what happens. And I think in a good government, that's what needs to be done because it all comes down to the people. There are note cards, if you didn't hear earlier. You need a note card to write a question if you do not want to come up here and ask the question or to get into a dialogue. You can write it on a note card, give it to me or Mike or Bob or Mark. So just raise your hands, you guys. There's Mike over there, Bob right there, and Mark over there, okay? Also, do we have a sign-in sheet? If you want to sign in, you sure may. It's not necessary that you have to do it, but you're very welcome to sign in. So if you need any correspondence, we can do that. Also, too, the same idea with that note card, as we can write a question on that note card. It was kind of fun today because at work, somebody brought me a question already before the meeting even started. And, you know, that's fantastic. I didn't really look at it. I, you know, glanced at the first, but it's going to be news to me, too, when we read that now, today. As far as opening it up, if you want to come up to the podium and address what your concern is, or if you have any comments on anything, we can talk about anything, you guys. It's nice that Councilman Rachel's is here. Councilwoman Laura Jobe is here, and I'm here. I guess Anthony did not make it. I know he was going to, but something came up. I know that he's had some kind of a cough and stuff like that, but so hope he's okay. With that being said, is there anyone who would like to start off the evening? Yes?
Me. I'm going to go up to the podium.
Come on up. You're used to that sort of thing.
Yeah. I'll get the ball rolling. Get it started.
Yes.
I just brought some comments to share. For those of you who I haven't met yet, I'm Lisa Workman. I'm the president of the Fergus Falls Area Chamber of Commerce. Our building is just across the street here on Court Street. The chamber serves 330-ish businesses, nonprofits, clubs, churches, schools, government agencies who are members of the chamber. So that's a little background of who I represent or who I'm speaking on behalf of and sharing you news on behalf of. Just wanted to share with you some good news. I wanted to get this started with some good news. So 2022 was a very good year for the business community in Fergus Falls. As you know, as a community, we celebrated 150 years, and the Chamber of Commerce has been serving businesses in our community for 137 of those years. So we've been in existence since 1886. One of our priorities is to drive local economic growth, and we see that through businesses expanding and new businesses opening up in Fergus Falls. In fact, in 2022, we had 69 celebrations, ribbon cuttings, ground breakings, anniversary celebrations, including a 100-year anniversary celebration for the Minnesota Motor Company, which is pretty incredible. During the holidays and over the summer, we do a little campaign where we boost local commerce. We call it Shop, Drop, and Win. And during those two-week campaigns, we tracked a total of $1.2 million that was spent right here in Fergus Falls, people who are dedicated to supporting our local businesses. And with that, it's a great thing because then a local option sales tax was collected, and that helped pay off or partially fund the library expansion and soon the aquatics and DeLagoon Park. So when people spend money in our community, it's good for everyone in the community. Speaking of the local option sales tax, we also survey our members. So we only represent them when they tell us or when they speak to us, when they answer surveys. And so last fall before the election, we surveyed our members, again, 350, 330 members. Again, they're for-profit businesses, nonprofit organizations, churches, clubs, schools, you name it. We surveyed them, and we had a fantastic response. We asked them, "Would you support the Aquatic Center through a local option sales tax? And would you support DeLagoon Park improvements with a local option sales tax?" Amazing response from our members and a super majority in favor of both. So the community, the business community, is very excited about those two projects that will start coming forward. And our local businesses value the work of the city, the work of the chamber, the work of Greater Fergus Falls, and many other organizations who really all work together to make this a great community. Recently, and in 2023, we surveyed our members. We said, "Well, how was business last year for you?" 91% said it was the same or better than it had been in the previous years. We also asked them, "What's 2023 looking like?" You know, because we all hear the gloom and doom of the, maybe the national media. You know, we hear about banks shutting down and different things like that. Well, here in Fergus Falls, our businesses are very optimistic. 94% of our members projected that their business for 2023 would be the same or better than it's been in the last couple of years. In fact, none of them, zero, plan to lay off. Zero of them have plans to lay off, and in fact, almost half, 45%, plan to add staff. And in order to add staff, we need population. We need people growing in our, growing in the community, families moving in, children growing up, going to work, just like you and I all did. And that's one of the biggest challenges that our businesses see, all of our employers see, is they're struggling with workforce. By far, that is their biggest challenge. They don't have enough candidates to choose from when they're looking to hire. And so on behalf of the city, or one of the things that the city can do, and we all can do, is one, of course, support local businesses because they generate sales tax to pay off things like an aquatic center in DeLagoon Park. But also, we need to do things that bring in more business, and we also need to have these amenities, beautiful library, the riverfront pavilion, the splash pad that will be built. A lot of amenities are the things that people are looking for. And that's one thing that we learned during the pandemic, that people can live anywhere. A lot more people are going to be choosing to live in Fergus Falls because of the things that they can do outside of work. And so, like I said, our members are concerned about workforce. We need reasons for folks to come to Fergus Falls, and we value any of those tools, any of those resources, any of those economic development tools that the city, that the chamber, that Greater Fergus Falls, Visit Fergus Falls, Otter Tail County, all of them, working together can use to bring those businesses here who will bring more families here as well. And so just wanted to, like I said, start with some positivity, that there are a lot of good things happening in our community, especially when we have open dialogue and work together. So I'm glad that you're hosting this town hall because it's important, I think, for everyone to hear what's really going on in our community.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Appreciate that. We've got some more at 10:00. Come on in. We've got some other chairs set up. There's some over there, some over here. Otherwise, there might be a few in there yet.
Well, I've been...
I'm going to follow up for a second. Mike Mortensen here, Third Ward, 911 North Vine, just a private citizen here tonight. I do have a business here in town, so the community is very important to me. But I think the thing that has to be said right off the bat that people need to realize is that Lisa Workman came in here from the chamber tonight, and she didn't have to. She could have ran away from that, you know? I don't know if I'd have been in a position, I would have. She came, and that's great. And she's here to listen. She's here to hear, and I really commend her for that, coming here tonight. I also commend Nantaya here from Greater Fergus Falls. So you have the CEO of Greater Fergus Falls, and you also have the chamber president here, which is tremendous for an outing like this, don't you agree?
And the city administrator?
City administrator is going to add with that next.
Clara Beck, executive director.
Yep, Clara Beck, council members. I think the public...
You know, I don't know if you people know these others. Scott, why don't you stand up? Scott, Rachel is council member. Anthony Hicks, stand up.
I'm on TV.
Yep.
Scott, they're not looking at you.
But what that does, and Kwame's here, too.
Kwame just came in, too.
What it does is it just speaks volumes to their ability to want to listen to the public. A lot of times, as a citizen, you're like, "No one's listening." They're all here tonight. Everybody's here to listen, pretty much. So I want to give everybody here a round of applause that has showed up, like Lisa and Nantaya and all of them. But I think we'd be remiss without thanking Al for what he's done here tonight. Al put this together single-handedly, and I don't know if it's the funeral director and him that did that real quickly or what it was, but he had it together very quickly. So Al, we thank you for putting this together because this doesn't usually happen.
Appreciate it. Thank you. And it's like what Mike said, and I had a radio interview at 10:15 this morning, and listening is one thing, but understanding is more important, too. I think that's one thing we have to understand, what's being said. You know, what I do for a living, I sit and listen to people. I try to help them through difficult time. But if you don't understand what they're talking about, you've lost it. So that's what we need to do here. We need to bring this community back together, I think, bring it all together, and we need to act as one. And that's so nice to have all of you here tonight. I really appreciate that. And with this, we can make some great things happen, I think. Now, with that being said, I've been handed some questions, and I will read them. It's, and I can't answer all these, so we're going to look to some of the council members, too, to help answer this stuff. And Clara, you two don't hide over there. It says here, I read in the paper, "We are now, Fergus Falls is a prairie city. Why was this not voted on? Why the people who live here, by the people who live here? What and why was this changed? Our lakes in town look like they belong in the country." You know, the prairie city, I guess I remember as a young boy when Fergus was the Tree City, part of Tree City USA. That was pretty neat. And then All-American City. I think those two kind of went together. And that was a long time ago. I don't know very much about a prairie city, to be honest with you. But I will, and there again, can you, let's have Clara, come on up, or if you want to answer it from there, whatever.
I'll just answer from here.
And how, and how it, I guess, how it was voted on, how it came into being, that sort of thing.
Yeah. And Jean Bowman, who's our communications manager, can help a little bit with this, too. But so Fergus Falls has been working over the last few years on doing some reclamation of native prairie land. You can see it at the golf course. You can see it in some of our parks in town. And in partnership with the groups who have been doing that, so it's Wildlife Forever, and Jean, do you remember the other organization that's kind of behind the Prairie City initiative? Yeah, United Prairie Foundation. So they're starting a new initiative that they're hoping can expand to other communities as well. Fergus Falls is actually the first Prairie City USA, so it's kind of a similar designation to a Tree City, which we do still hold the title of, I believe. We do still claim to be a Tree City, but we are in a prairie pothole region of the country. It's a large swath that reaches into Canada that we're also part of. So working with United Prairie Foundation and Wildlife Forever, Fergus Falls, with our, you know, topography of our area was a kind of a natural location for the first Prairie City USA. So it's, it was an initiative that our mayor has taken on. He's been the one who's really been working with those organizations. So they came in and did a dedication ceremony, I think, last summer it was, and maybe even just in August. So it's similar to Tree City, where if you qualify, you get to be named that, and we have a sign up on the edge of town, and then you'll see in front of some of our prairie plantings, you'll see some signs that also talk about the Prairie City program.
Why wasn't that voted on by the people?
Well, we don't vote on Tree City USA either, I don't think. Yeah, it's just a kind of a fun thing that the city can be part of. Yeah.
The funding that comes with that? Normally, there's some red tape or some agreements that you have to make and so on. What kind of agreements do you have to make by Fergus Falls?
Yeah, there's no funding, actually, that's part of it. It's really just the title. So it's just a program to be part of.
No agreements that have to be made or things?
No agreement. And if there were an agreement, it would have gone in front of the city council is where you would have seen that.
Is that why our lakes look like they belong in a field? I live on Lake, I live on Lake Alice. And Lake Alice, I lived there for 23 years, and it was beautiful when I moved in. And now you have, I have thistles coming in my yard, and I have this prairie grass in front.
Sure.
And I don't understand why.
Yeah, maybe, that's maybe a question for the Parks and Rec Department. They would be overseeing the actual growth of the native prairie, but that's really all I know about the program. So I can maybe answer more questions specifically about that.
Also, too, I know that there's a kind of a project that's going to be happening here in the near future on Lake Alice, where there's going to be basically like an aerator that's going to be on one side. That was what we threw, and what it'll do, it's supposed to clean up the water. And it's, we're going to see how that works. I remember, you know, Lake Alice has kind of went back and forth in good and bad. I mean, I remember on a field trip in elementary school when I fell in it. I was up here in mud. And, you know, it was mucky then. And so it kind of goes back and forth. And I know that with this machine, I can't remember the name of it. Do you remember?
Airator.
Airator, yeah. Basically, I kind of equate it to like an aquarium pump, just kind of bring some light back into that stagnant water.
Well, I know my neighbor went out, they have, what is the auger? No, what is the wire run through?
Cobert.
Cobert, yeah. And it was blocked, and he called the city, and they never came and cleaned it. So he cleaned it, and then called the city, and all this tree stuff and garbage was laying out there. And they came and cleaned it after he took everything out.
Yeah, you know, as far as, I think the only thing we can do is bring that concern to the city and say, "Hey, you know, would you please come and look at this? I feel it's urgent."
Yeah.
You know, and that's where we've got to have some good dialogue. And with respect to everybody, and as we go through here tonight, too, one of the things I was going to mention, we want to keep it, and I'm not saying anybody's been online here at all, but we want to keep it very dignified, respectful, and let people, you know, finish and continue their comments. So thank you for that. And what I do, we're going to find out if this aerator works.
Okay.
Mike?
I think what they're asking you in that question, and I might be wrong, is who picked these type of native grasses to be planted, and why wasn't the city citizens concerned about it? And I think the question for Andrew would be this, going forward, who picks, you know, that Lake Alice gets this along that side? Is it Park and Rexit does it? Who can, who can they direct their questions to, and how can they put some input to that, I think?
Yeah, that's a great question. We do have the Natural Resources Advisory Committee, which is made up of five citizen members that are appointed by the city council. They're the ones who weigh in on the native grass mixes, and they're the ones who often interact closely with our public work staff when ones budget the plantings around Lake Alice and maintain those things. So there's a board that meets regularly. I don't know what the standing meeting is, but those guys have consulted with this United Prairie Foundation on what those grasses look like.
Well, I asked a question, so I was concerned, because I am getting thistles in my yard, but I thought Lake Alice looks horrible.
And the problem is that there is a trade-off between like mowing the grass and if you kind of have like, obviously mowed grass around Lake Alice, then that means that all the water runs, you know, quickly into Lake Alice and takes all the garbage from the stream and the fertilizer from people's garden directly into Lake Alice, and that adds to the bloom. You know, the objective of the native plantings is that that obviously grows along the grass and along the stem, and that acts as some sort of filter and helps the, you know, the runoff water settle, you know, on the shoreline and soak into the ground and not take the nitrogen into the, into Lake Alice. So you have this kind of like balance between beautification of kind of mowed edges to Lake Alice, but then preservation of the water. And, you know, there's some areas that obviously, and the native grass takes longer to establish, obviously, than just, you know, normal lawn-type grass. But if, are you on northeast or?
I'm on the north end.
North end, so that was where that native was in front. It took quite a long time to establish.
They did. The geese were having, well, I know the geese go in there, but the geese were walking in the road so that they, what they gave was no...
Avoided the grass.
Yeah. So much so that the geese could go around that area and get in the lot, because there were a lot of geese that were killed.
Yeah.
Because of the cars still going slow down, so.
And we're on the west side on Union Avenue. Yeah. And there is that grass on the west side of Lake Alice, and for the last five years, we've had creeping charlie and more and more of it coming into our yards.
So do I.
Yep. So I wonder if that isn't part of the thing that we've had there as far as an invasive species.
Yeah. A weed is only a weed when it's somewhere and doesn't need to be.
Right. So it doesn't need to be there.
Right. It ain't not to be.
Mike, do you have a question?
Yes. So we're a prairie city, and we're not getting any money for it. How much money does it cost in the city to be a prairie city? How many, how many city hours do we spend on that where we could put our man-hours to somewhere else? Because, you know, I, the last council meeting, I was sitting, there was a gentleman up there, and he said, "Well, we should have talked about having a raise as a councilman because we don't have no taxes." Well, if we're spending money on something that's not helping us and we're not getting a return on it, what's the sign word?
You know, I guess, there again, Clara, I guess, okay.
It actually, the program actually saves the city money because there's less area that we're having to mow or maintain. So, you know, there's upfront task, of course, but doing the payback analysis, we're actually saving on annual basis, and we don't need to be a member of that organization or prairie city or anything like that. So they're actually going to cost the city.
And I just, oh, go ahead, Kathy.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I live over by, like, what is it? It's known as Adams, now Grotto. And my memories, like, last summer is even driving through or walking, you can't even see the lake anywhere, right? And you only have a little slab of cement that is totally covered with geese and duck. And you just can't even get close to it. And I mean, I've lived in that area for 40 years, and I've never seen it look, you know, really so tacky. Driving through or whatever, I mean, you just don't have any connection with it at all, or I used to push a stroller down that lane and whatever, and it's not great. I mean, I can see we can have patches of these indigenous grasses or whatever that makes sense to me, but to have it just totally take over the shoreline, it's getting out of hand.
And maybe if the city is saving money on that, they could help us by giving us some of the stuff to prevent the creeping charlie in our yards. Would that be a possibility?
You can't maybe omit the headlines, you know?
You know, that's what, that's what this is great, you know, bringing all these things to life. And, you know...
I'm going to step in. Go ahead. Mike? I successfully ran for council last time, and when I dialogued with people around Lake Alice, some of the folks that had been there for a lifetime, maybe two generations, have a lot of heartburn. That heartburn goes on to the studies that they've had and got nothing done. It used to be great, and now it's not. Council says, "We're going to fix it, and we'll get right back to you," and it's not. So it occurs to me that this Lake Alice is still a huge issue compared to the fish. Wild weeds, mowing, it's been poorly managed. And I think the city needs to put that on the top priority, and I would agree. I don't think we really need to change the name of the city. We need to take care more of the things. Lake Alice is one of them.
Back during the run for the election, there was, I believe, it was a debate, it's kind of a question and answer out of Fergus Brewing. And there was a question about, you know, Fergus Falls and, you know, how do we get, how do we get people here and this sort of thing? And I always said, you know, I get tired of hearing that Brainerd is the gateway to the lakes. You know, we all hear that. You know, this is kind of the first gateway to the lakes because we're right on the edge of the prairie, which is a whole different ecosystem, and there's people who really study that, who love that, and there are people who love the lakes. So we're right in the area there that we're, it's the best of both worlds, I think. So we are really, the way I look at it from the West, we are the first gateway to the lakes because this county has over, what's it, 1,100 lakes in it. You know, that's, I think that's fantastic. So we got to look at that. We can build on that stuff. So, you know, with the prairie thing, me personally, I'm fine with that, having that word out there because we're part of that. You know, we are part of that. So I think we can build on that, too. It's just another little, you know, something in our arsenal. So we need to build on these things. Question again here.
Before we go to the second question, not to cut you off, but, you know, if people would be willing to, if you'd raise your hand, if you think Grotto Lake, Lake Alice, and those areas need some attention, or if you think they're good, if you think they need the attention, raise your hand.
Yes.
Otter Tail River, too.
Otter Tail River. So, those that think it's doing all right, raise your hand or just kind of, okay. So the council's seen you?
Yep.
The administrator's seen you, everybody's seen you, which is, I think, what, a great accomplishment tonight.
Well, I think...
I'd like to add one last thing.
Go right ahead.
In previous cities that I've lived in before Fergus Falls that have had interior city lakes or ponds and have added that aerator system to the pond, it's made a dramatic difference in what that is.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
It puts fresh air into the water, eliminates, I mean, you got to think of it, I have an aquarium at home, so I kind of think of it like that. When you get too much garbage inside the water, you have a buildup of ammonia in the water, which in turn creates the algae bloom, which in turn creates the smell that we've all smelled off of Alice and Grotto. By putting that area into it, you're naturally getting rid of that ammonia out of the water.
Al, did you send that guy up?
He's in my ward.
Turn it to the legislature.
I'll give you 50 bucks after that.
Fortunately, we got the DNR here, and nothing's happened. So, I mean, they're, they're right here.
I remember...
The DNR can't get along?
I remember years ago, too, they used to have, I don't know if any of you remember it, there used to be like a fountain out there in Lake Alice. Do you remember that, you guys?
There used to be trees on, on the island out there.
Yeah.
They were green, and they weren't, it wasn't all brown. I mean, there were actually birds, actually, big out there.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I would say it was egrets.
Kind of like, you know, and they didn't have the cormorant, so they're...
Yeah, exactly. I'm going to jump to another question, you guys. There's actually a couple of questions here that are relating to Stanton Avenue project. It says here, "For the Stanton Avenue project, how many feet are needed for the width of street, sidewalk, et cetera? And how many feet are available without taking any property from the landowners? Can we make do with what is currently available?"
What is Stanton Islands? What are they going to do? I don't understand.
It's going to be redone.
Yeah, we're looking at...
All right, go ahead, Andrew. And then let me read this other question, too, kind of that goes with it. "For the Stanton Avenue project, if land is used on the south, how are the driveways going to be redone as the slopes will be steeper? Question mark, will the slopes be steeper? All driveways with slopes will be impacted. Slopes start immediately off the sidewalks."
Okay. Andrew?
Yeah, I'll start with answering your question. Stanton Avenue, we're looking at a reconstruction project. Stanton Avenue is the one that runs on the backside of service food, between the flour mill and service food. We're looking at doing from Union Avenue to Broadway Avenue. It'll be all new utilities, so water, sewer lines...
It'll be all new utilities, so water sewer lines and then street reconstruction, as well as, um, uh, off, off streets, back of curb trail, um, as it connects to these trail systems through downtown. As to that specific question, we're actually in design phases right now, so we don't have the answers fleshed out. Um, city engineer would be able to answer that better. Um, you have an idea for that? But we will not expand the right away. We're gonna work within the existing right away, so we're not gonna have to encroach any further onto people's land. Um, that trail I talked about on the south side may take up some grass area, but that's already within the city right away. I don't know whose question that was, but I can't, since it's actively being designed, we haven't completely answered those questions, but we're happy to, uh, to do.
A side question to this, is this being done on Stanton Avenue now because of the flour mill being designated to be turned into this B and B or whatever it's going to be type of thing?
No, no.
Cause I've lived here for nine years and I've never heard him talk anything about doing anything on that. And I now have a daughter that's decided to stay and make this community hers and bought a house on the stand. So that obviously means that her property taxes are gonna go up dramatically now to pay for them.
Not necessarily. There, there may be special assessments, but the property taxes shouldn't be impacted by that. Um, it's, it's not related to the mill project. It's been in the works for a long time and, and obviously one of our worst roads in town.
Andrew, that leads to another question.
Sure.
Why have you not finished going around Lake Alice and, uh, putting in water and sewer and putting it back into place the way it should be? So that those people, especially on the west side, uh, will have front, water and sewer that doesn't have to come clear out to, uh, Union Avenue.
Sure. Um.
That's never been done, just a quarter of it, with the promise that the rest of it was gonna be done in increments. Well, that was ten years ago and it's never been finished.
Sure. Um, that predates me, so I can't speak to that promise. But, um, funding, it's all about funding, right? Um, that's not a state aid street. Water and sewer infrastructure costs a lot of money and trying to prioritize that, you know, we can't do it all. We did overlay that street here, what, three summers ago, maybe four already? I guess the years fly by. Um, so the street's in good shape, um, but there'll be a point in time where we have to come back and do that.
And without, uh, soon after again, soon after you overlay a street, somebody's, uh, water and sewer goes out of balance, so they have to rip the whole thing out and do it all over again.
Happens every time.
Yeah, so why don't they do the job and do it right in the first place?
Well, I, you, you know, I, I don't know if that's a fair, I don't know if that's a fair statement. Um, if there's a, if there's a line that's clogged coming from a home, or if, you know, uh, the line's coming from the home that's aged and it breaks, that has nothing to do with the road project.
It's been out in the street most of the time, not, not by the homeowner, not where the homeowner is, it's been out in the street.
A lot of times those are clogged, there're sewer lines that get clogged at the main. Nothing from the sewer line goes from the city's line to the home. It all comes from the home to the city's line. I, I mean, I'm just being fair and honest, right? And I, and I'm not, I'm not here to get grilled, I'm here to listen to you guys. So I don't wanna stand up here and just get peppered all night.
I'm not gonna grill you, I'm just gonna.
Yeah, please.
We always talk about funding, how much wheel tax does the city get from the county?
Uh, zero as far as I know.
How come? We all, every, anybody who lives in Otter Tail County pays a wheel tax to Otter Tail County. I mean, they take our money the other way, don't we get any reimbursement on that back, on that wheel tax?
You know, I, I, I'm obviously.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna.
Not.
Yeah, you can find out.
The, I think what you, the answer you would hear from the county on that is there's county roads that run through the, the middle of town, Fur Avenue, um, and a couple others that they would spend, Tower Road, that they would spend those dollars on within the city limits, so. They would tell you that they are providing funding to the city of Fergus Falls.
Can I ask you a question about that, of water and sewer and the street? I thought just a few years ago, the city changed their policy so that if the work that needed to be done was in the street, the city was gonna do that instead of charging it to the homeowners, is that true or not?
It recently changed where, um, it's the homeowner's responsibility on the sewer side all the way to the city main. Because like I mentioned, it only comes one way. And, um, the city's responsibility on the water line stops at the, um, curb stop or the right of way. Yep. Good question. It, it previously was where the city had, um, everything from the curb stop on both sewer and water. Everything out of the right of way, or to the right of way was the city's and then the sewer just recently changed. Okay. I'm gonna get on here. Okay. Thank you for the question.
Alright, somebody has a question that, uh, goes as this. I have recently heard about a fund, not sure the name, that is available for small businesses coming into Fergus Falls. I understand this fund, in quotes, gives tax breaks to new businesses brought to Fergus Falls. I am wondering if current businesses in Fergus Falls have access to this fund that gives tax breaks? If so, please explain, thank you. That was first part of the question. Um, yeah, well, let's go with that one. Um, and then I'll get to the second question that this person has. Um. Maitai, do you know anything about this?
Is it a question about, is it a question about tax increment financing or loan?
It, it says a loan.
There is no loan, there's no.
You might be thinking about TIF, tax.
TIF would be the, kind of the closest you might get.
Right.
There are no, there is no kind of tax breaks that are given by the state that are a pass through type program or the feds.
I think what they might be speaking to is the city has a lower interest rate loan that you used to give out, you used to do to a business.
And that's, we, we do have that, that's through Business Development, Fergus Falls.
Yeah.
And there's kind of like, I think there's four loan pools, uh, within that structure that people can apply for. You know, one is like a facade loan, one is, uh, LED lighting, uh, and then two are kind of general kind of funds. Uh, there's obviously some obligations to each of those loan programs, but the city can set the interest rate on that. Uh, and they can set the terms on that, but there's no forgiveness part of that.
Is.
Uh, the only time we did any forgiveness, uh, was on, during COVID. Um, obviously when we forgave, you know, the interest and payment, the principal payments for a period, I think, of three months, but that was tacked on to the end. And that was to help businesses get through, obviously, you know, the un, unknown criteria of, uh, of, uh, COVID.
And it talks about new businesses, Anthony. Is, could that be for existing?
Businesses also take advantage of that loan pool.
Okay.
Uh, there's, there's several businesses in town that are existing. You know, I mean, I, I can think of one off the top of my head.
Yeah.
That's used that loan, loan program at least six to eight times. Uh, there's another one that's used it probably a dozen times. And then obviously, any, any new, new companies coming to town can also use that, but.
So there.
Some have used it at different levels.
So there's kind of a tool there that can be used.
It's a tool, it's available to anybody.
And that's the thing too.
There's a link on the city website.
I, I, I want people to realize this too. We're not only looking for new businesses in this town, we're looking to keep what we got. These people have worked very hard at their business to keep it going, especially the last two, three years. You know, we gotta try to keep these businesses here, support them, but yet we need some big business here. And I think there's gonna be some good things coming to Fergus Falls. I, I feel, I feel really good about that. And I think that there's gonna be some good ideas that are gonna come forth and it's gonna happen. What I wanna see is this, at some point in time, and I know other communities do this, and one in particular, I don't need to say the name, but what they do is they get together the different groups. You know, they get together with their different special interest groups or different factions of that. And they decide, hey, what are we gonna do in the next coming years? And they work on it together. You don't have a, a special interest group for doing a swimming pool and you don't have another one for doing a skate park and you don't have another one for doing the lagoon. We gotta work together to get the project done, like Wally said. I was really excited to see what happened to Lake Alice ten years ago. I thought, hey, it's gonna look really nice. And then it just petered out. You know, that is what is, that, that's, that's, that's not moving ahead. To me, that's a failure. It's not done. And we cannot move on if something's not done. Check it off the list. But I do see good things happening. You know, this is, this is a prime example right here. But we've gotta get these groups together on what, hey, let's prioritize this stuff. Okay? Let's work together, let's do this first, and then in another couple of years, we're gonna work on your project. That's how you get it done. You know, I, and I think I'm gonna jump to this, with that being said.
You had one other question there.
Oh.
Matt, if you wanna.
I'm sorry. Yep.
Just a comment and clarification on the, the funding. Um, that's available to all businesses in the community, including nonprofit organizations. The chamber used all three of the loan pools when we renovated five years ago. Through the generosity of our successful business community, we were able to pay it off early. We've paid off all those loans and all those ones can be reused again. And just to note too, I know a lot of people sometimes think that all money, they think that all the money is going to a new business. It's not. I mean, during COVID, I don't remember the exact dollar number, but I wanna say the city gave grants to local business, local businesses to keep them open during COVID. Money that they had gotten from the federal government, for over a million dollars. Amounts to help keep those businesses that are here, successful, doors open.
Great.
And I'm happy if, if anyone ever has questions or wants to chat more, feel free to get in touch with me, but just a clarification.
And I, and I do need to, go ahead, Mike.
I, there was a sporting goods store that moved into town, when they moved into town, there was, uh, less than a million dollars that they received for some kind of grants or tax forgiveness or whatever, and that's what brought them here. And that was quite a few years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Was that a grant or a loan?
I don't know.
After a rumor too.
It was TIF. It was TIF, it was TIF.
That was TIF then, okay. Um, the second part of this question, since you talked about COVID, that's gonna, I'm gonna lead into that quick, so, sit down Mike. I've gained some confidence, didn't I? Um, it says here, how much money did the city of Fergus Falls get for COVID relief? Question mark. What was it spent on? Question mark. I heard some or all was spent on the NP park. If so, wondering how that helped COVID relief? I don't know how to answer that.
And how much was spent at the, uh, because the Lake Regional Hospital said, you've got COVID. So who gets the money there?
I have no idea.
Quite a bit.
I'm, uh, I'm being really honest, I don't know.
Yeah.
And I, you know, the, um.
They were paid to say that.
You know, the, uh, the, uh, COVID time, you know, thank goodness we're kinda moving out of that and, uh, moving forward here. But, um, you know, I know that, uh, it didn't affect me at all. We just did business as usual and we had to. And that's just what we had to do. And, uh, you know, I, I know that there was a lot of businesses that suffered through that. You know, especially the restaurant business, I tell you, you know, that's tough. And Bill, you know too, with catering, you know, that shut everything down. You know, I'm really happy to see people here from even south of Underwood that have business in this town. Because that guy gets a chance to talk right now or whenever he wants to. It's usually behind the scenes, he's always after me. But it's, uh, it's nice to see you here and that you can.
On NP park.
Yeah, what about that? Yep.
Uh, uh, the greatest percentage of that money was raised by Serenopy and Kiwanis.
Yep.
Those are new Kiwanis.
Yeah, and I think it was a, that was a, a very kind of successful, public kind of, you know, city collaboration, where the greater part of the funding to that park was actually private citizen money.
Good.
And the money that it put in came out of the liquor store fund and not come out of COVID relief dollars?
Good. Um, so we've got that question answered. You know, when I, I said that, you know, I want, I want these different groups to work together, how we can make this happen so we can finish these projects. And I know there's another person here in this, this crowd that could answer this question, um, for all of you. Um, I believe it was in two thousand seventeen, uh, my brother who is here, uh, was the president of the Economic Development Group in Bemidji. And he could speak to a lot of things about what went on there. But if I remember right, it was two thousand seventeen, wasn't it, that Sanford donate, was gonna donate ten million dollars to a wellness center? And what they did with that, they didn't, it wasn't jumped on right away, as from what I understand. Um, there was another at least twenty million dollars that was raised to complement that with sheets of ice, basketball courts, uh, along with this wellness center, a pool. Um, what else was, do you remember what else?
Indoor tennis, a whole.
Yeah, so it was a whole, whole, um, a lot of goodness going on there. And now I think it was this year when they finally are gonna, it's gonna happen. But the community, the pri, the private citizens, uh, raised like twenty million dollars. No taxpayer money. And it's going in Bemidji, on the, on the lakeside, and then there is room for luxury condos just a little bit farther down. You know, this, these are things that we gotta look at, you guys. You know, this is, this is big stuff. And, you know, we can kinda learn from what these other cities are doing too. And, but I wanna come up with ideas so we're not followers, I want us to be proactive in this stuff. I don't wanna be reactive, you're never gonna win the game being reactive. It's not gonna happen. So that's, uh, I just wanted to make that comment. You know, I think we can get some great things done here. Now, uh, what I wanted to touch base on, as we were talking about, um, this was handed to me the day at work from a citizen. It says, greetings. I hope that the city and its council reconsider planning the aquatic center in Roosevelt. For many reasons, Roosevelt is a home to concerts, movies, picnics, and quiet, underlined recreation. Also, the pristine oaks and the cost of clearing century old shade trees is imaginable. I believe the center should be located in Broadway Park. Why Broadway? Has everything for everyone, horseshoes, tennis, picnic tables and shelter, playground equipment, ample sunshine without clearing trees, parking, restrooms, a short walk to Noise Park, easy access from Cherry, Broadway, Birch and Oak Street. Over. I'm a Fergus Falls native and resident, plus I voted for the center. So my opposition is to the location, even without the Broadway Ball Diamond, there would be diamonds at Grotto, the Lagoon, Red Sox, Hannah and Athletic. Please explore this option. And that was another thing too, and I can't remember how it was worded on that ballot anymore. But did it say, you know, I agree, I, I want the aquatic center, I don't, but did it say where it was gonna be? Because I think if it said where, I can't remember, did it say?
It said.
Okay. And, uh, so it did say it on there. Uh, I, I, me personally, as where I live, I agree with that, a hundred percent. I think, I think that was, should have been explored. I mean, that park is gorgeous. Those trees are over a hundred years old. You, we're not gonna see those again, you guys, if they're gone. And, you know, things like that mean a lot to me. What I remember about Roosevelt Park, just hold on one second, I gotta, I gotta have some memory here.
Okay, if you go up to Roosevelt Park when Weaver and your brother was in high school, they had a, a vet, uh, VOTEC program and went up the hill and we squealed our tires all the way up the hill. I was up to a. I was up to a, a bachelor club in this, in this, in the Kentia Gym, and there was no parking to be had there at all.
No, I know.
And what about the four neighbors?
Yeah.
You know, wherever you put this, I don't care where you put this.
It...
I, I don't think it's needed. But I do believe that you gotta think of the neighbors.
I agree, Mike.
And the expansion, because, you know?
And, and I know that, uh, you know, when we had a meeting with the school board, uh, a couple of months ago, maybe it was, now I can't remember. But it was before the meeting and I was talking about that. I said, "You know, if we're gonna do an aquatic center, why would you not try to do it year-round?" And I, it was way too much money, I guess. Um, the thing is, we're gonna be able to use it for three months. Whereas if we had it in like, maybe, and I know Andrew had said it's a lot of money to connect it up with a Big Wood, because not much is happening with that right now. But at least it would bring people in, would, could feed off of that in the wintertime with hockey tournaments and things of that nature. I mean, you know, things like that, it could happen. But, I don't, I, I, I see what you're saying, Nick, and I, I do agree with you too. Um, with, uh, that, the aquatic center too, you know, we do have a person that is, that used to be a swimming, uh, coach and teacher, it'll be just one second, that was instrumental in 1987, that's the year I graduated from University of Minnesota, when the, the aquatic center was put in down there. It was put in the center of Memorial Stadium that they tore down. And, you know, he didn't, he, he reached out to people, and I don't know if, well, he told me he wasn't, nobody called him Nick. And that's what he had told me, he used to be my, uh, my, uh, teacher years ago, FIAD teacher, and he was a swimming coach. And very knowledgeable fella about this. He was, you know, he said he wrote over four hundred letters to government officials to try to get that to happen. I mean, this guy knows the ropes to get the money. And, you know, he's a fantastic fella, and there's resources like that in this town. You know, we are our own destiny here. You know, we don't have to look to somebody as a hero to pay something for us, or this and that. There's a lot of talented and smart people in this town who know about business, who specialize in different things, that we can capitalize on and move ahead. Go ahead.
Can we sit up at Rado, or I, uh, at, uh, you mean at, uh, Roosevelt?
I don't know. You know, I'm kinda, that was before I was kinda on the council, I don't know if they're gonna be saved or not. I don't know the layout, to be honest with you. But, um, I don't want that park to go either. I mean, like I said, I, I, and Mike, you know, we've got memories of that, you being a delinquent. I'm glad you caught that.
The, the issue, Al, is that ultimately the people voted to put it in Roosevelt Park.
Yep.
So basically, it was a majority vote, and so that's where it will go. Because basically, the people voted for it to go where it is.
Right.
And, and that, and that, I, I would agree that I think a lot of people voted for the aquatic center, but didn't necessarily like the location. But, but they vote, by voting for it, and, and the affirmative, you sealed the fate of the...
Right.
...trees. Because that's where it has to be. And, and we can't now undo that, because the majority of people in Fergus Falls voted for it to be in that location.
I, I do understand that.
Didn't have a choice on there. It was just Roosevelt Park, period.
The, the choice was yes or no.
Yes or no, Roosevelt Park, yes or no.
They, they had a choice, it was yes or no.
And, and that's, it's kind of a, hate to use the word, maybe a loaded kind of a question, or, you know, i- i- it's, if you vote this way, if something that you want, it's gotta be over here on a place where it shouldn't be. You know? I, I don't, I, you see, I do have an issue with that. I don't think, I think it should've been, okay, if you're gonna vote for it, yes or no? No, we're gonna have another vote where at. You know? You know what, I don't know.
I don't think so.
Scott, what do you know about it?
No.
Okay.
Majority, sixty-eight percent of people voted for it.
Yeah, but do you, do you kinda see where they're coming from?
I, I didn't vote for it, so, 'cause I didn't want it there, that's why I didn't vote for it.
Yeah.
Out of curiosity, um, you say it can't be amended, ground has not been broken. Can a petition be signed that a new vote comes out to change the location of where that is? Not yes or no to the aquatic center, but a location?
You know what, I am so glad you're in Ward Three. Everybody who's thinking like he is, raise your hand. I'd just like to see, you know, if you think that, you know, just out of curiosity, if...
Can you say what you think?
Okay, I think what we're looking at here is if it, if there could be a petition brought up saying that, hey, um, if the aquatic center went through, okay, that's fine. But now, it wasn't really understood clearly where it was gonna go. You know, it's, you know, I don't know.
Al, can you bring that up to the council and ask them?
Yep, go ahead, Scott.
I mean, I was on the council, I voted for this, but I was on the council four years ago, and this project started maybe seven years ago. And it's been going on, they had different spots, and they've been going through on the work. There was a lot of spot, one of them just didn't get picked. And when they came down to it, and, and also it was gonna be Roosevelt Park, probably six months before we voted on it, I would say, at least. And so now it's been voted on, I don't believe, the council can't turn it over because the people voted for it. People can, I don't know what the right, I don't know what the right is, I don't know what the profit procedures, if there's any, I don't believe there is. But that's not, that's not, I'm not listening to gospel.
You know, I'm not saying anything as you want, sir, but I mean, it's just, if somebody wants an option to be able to change that location. I mean, if, if ground hasn't been broken, to me, a- a- as a resident of the city of Fergus Falls, is that we should have the ability to now say, "Hey, we were good with this, but, but now, five thousand of us have said, hey, we would like to look at a different situation or a different location."
Going back to what Anthony said, that's a no question. I, I love the aquatic park, I mean, I think it would be great, but I like, yeah, patients, I voted no. And so, that's, that's...
Scott.
Some people chose, had sixty, some people said yes. And so right now, they're in a, we're in the stages of, of, uh, final design, I believe, and it's, it's, I don't believe it can be stopped. I, but, I'm not, I can't, yeah.
Go, go ahead, Dean.
If neighbors decide they don't want this thing right in the middle of their neighborhood, you can't put any more stuff up in Roosevelt Park.
Well, well, Dean, that's, that, you know, Dean, that's exactly what, what, what I thought too. And we talk about, you know, the school talks about green space. You know, they're talking about locations of difference, of the, of this elementary school and green space. Well, they're gonna wipe all the green space. Um, you know, that, that park is very, i- in my opinion, very historic. And I think, my feeling, it should be saved. Um, I have great memories, and, you know, those things, uh, as many of us do, of that park. Um, I'll just tell you, what my fondest memory is, walking back from the Roosevelt High School to the football field on Friday nights. Walking through that park and those trees, getting ready to go play a football game and then walking back. You know, that's fantastic memories. That, you know, they'll still be my memories, but that park is beautiful.
What happened to the state hospital grounds up there, do we own that? Can we do anything with that? Because there is a place up there to do stuff with it.
Yep. Scott, what do you say about that? Kwame, that is. No, you be quiet. Scott, what, Scott, Scott's on, uh, friends with the Kirk bride, and he's very involved with the, uh, Scott Kwame, that is, council member Kwame. And maybe he has some, uh, insight on that too.
So if people are interested in changing something, how do they do it? How do they do it?
The goal for me tonight was to come and listen, I didn't expect to speak. So I'm gonna use your line that, hey, I'm here to listen, but in this case, I'm gonna have to say something. The city owns the RTC, so to answer your question, the city owns it, and lots of things could happen there. And something certainly will happen there someday. You've maybe noticed that there's been some work being done up there even now, to secure the building, fix the roof, secure the bottom windows and the plywood and all that. That's the last phase, that will use the last of the dollars that were allocated by the state for the, uh, sec, securing and maintaining of the site.
If they're...
So that's my answer to the RTC question, does that answer your question?
Well, I'm talking about putting a aquatic park up there.
That's a different question.
That has nothing to do with the building itself, except I don't know why they're covering the windows when they were talking about knocking the two ends off of the regional treatment center to get...
Okay, there's been a lot of things talked about of what might happen. The remaining structure is all a historic building, it's subject to a lot of restrictions for what a builder might do, that if you were to take something more down, would affect those historic designations, changes the whole tax thing, changes the whole development formula, and kaboom, the whole thing stops.
That's why they're covering the windows on everything now.
The covering of the windows is to secure the building, more than anything, and to keep the water and the people out, so that it doesn't, um, turn into a more of a trouble. And so...
Talk about what happened on the outside, all the stuff that's been going on in the last seven years, especially the nurses' cottage, talk about that later.
Well, I think it's, yeah, it's important to note that the other related buildings around there, there've been apartments made into them, the nurses' cottage has been made into an assisted living home, and there's been further expectations for more of that to be done in the buildings around there. And so it's a slow process, when you've got a building that's as big as that is, you don't come up with a project real quick.
Okay, but getting back to what we were talking about, why can't you put an aquatic park up there?
Aquatic park was one of the many locations that was suggested, and it was ruled out for a number of reasons. One of them being the historic nature of that campus and how an aquatic park would eliminate the historic designation and wipe it out for potential development. That was one of the reasons.
Potential development of what?
That's my understanding. So that's my understanding of how, how that is. As far as the Roosevelt Park deal, as Scott said, the majority voted on that, that's a done deal. Now, as far as whether the city can be approached with a petition from anybody, I think anybody could make any petition they want. I think you'd be wasting your time. That's a done deal, and it's gonna begin the funding, and all of the process for that has been worked on for years, it's all coming. If you wanna go and start a petition drive, go for it, it'll make great headlines. It probably won't change a thing, that's my opinion on that. And then to back up one other thing, there was a lot of conversation about Lake Alice here, as far as all these expectations and stuff. First of all, the water thing, it's not a fountain, it's not a bubbler, it's not an oxygenator. I've talked with the guy on this one, it's a ionizer, that's probably a better way to put it. And so once you see this happening, you're not really gonna see anything. It's this small little box, it's gonna be at the end of the dock, no one's gonna see anything. And we won't really even know if that works for two years. And we won't even know if it's gonna happen for at least two months. It's a proposed pilot project that will be funded by a state, and we don't have the money, we don't have the program yet, it's all just in the proposal stage yet. So, it's not necessarily gonna happen, we're hoping it will. Um, it'd be great if it does, but we probably won't know until the bonding bill passes or does it again to me, and then we'll have an answer on that. I think I've answered those three questions? Any other, while I'm here? Thank you.
Al, can I...
Yep.
Just relative to this, um, water park, um, a couple things. I think the only thing you can, uh, that you can conclude from the sixty-eight percent vote is that people said, "I'll vote for it, uh, to, because I want a water park, and if it has to be in Roosevelt Park, I guess the tail goes with the height." It wasn't that they made a conscious decision that, that that's where it wanted to be, they weren't given an alternative.
Right.
And as far as things not being changed, until you spend the money, it can be changed. And, and, uh, that's why for politicians, they get voted into office, that's why there's a recall process.
Exactly.
Things can be changed.
Exactly.
Nothing is spent until money is spent.
I would, uh, y- you know, agree with you hundred percent on that, Pete. I think what we need to do is, uh, uh, you know, maybe have a meeting with Andrew and, and the city attorney, and, and maybe, uh, you know, some others that could answer that. Go ahead, Mike.
What I do, Al, and I appreciate Scott Kwame, Scott, the Rachels and all that, but your question was, you know, can you do anything about it? And it's not done yet. And Pete's stating the same thing, until it's done, it's not done. So I would never let a council member, one individual council member, tell you that. Now, they may want to, but they can't. So what needs to happen is, Al's your constituent, or he's your council member, he is constituent. What needs to happen is you come to Al and you say, "Al, look at the legal ramifications or the legal process that can happen." And what Al will do is he'll vote with the city attorney, he'll discuss it with him, and he'll... Now, his judgment might be, "It's over, the people, it's done, there's no more, absolutely no more." That's a judgment call, then you have to take it to the next step or not do it. But, I appreciate working with these council members, they've been around for a while, but you gotta look at it with your, your council member, so he can check it out for you.
Go ahead, Mike.
Al, can I change the subject a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a safety question for you. Over, Hill Press built that new school over there?
Okay.
All right, over by Adams, they got that, and, and over by the Catholic school, they got...
You being on Channing there?
Yep.
Yep.
Twenty, twenty miles an hour when the kids are present. Why can't they put them signs like that over there?
You know, I, I would think they probably could, maybe they just haven't been asked yet.
I mean, is it, is it gonna take one little child to get hurt before it's done?
And I've, I, actually, I've done something like that, years ago, I had an issue with some, there was parking, um, on one side of the street, which I thought was very dangerous. It was out in front of the, the, um, the clinic and the hospital entrance. Because it would back up traffic, you couldn't go around, there was parking there. Um, and that got changed. I think it just has to be butted up, you know, and so thanks for doing that. Because I'll gladly, you know, if it's a public safety issue, I'll talk to Kyle Bergeron, the police chief, and...
The school, are you talking about?
The new one over by Unchanning, the old Eisenhower.
The old Eisenhower one.
I mean, I mean on that, it's, Chris, I just bringing it up.
Yeah.
Just, you know, for example, I mean, we changed the speed limit on, uh, going out towards the roundabout. You know, we went from thirty to forty-five, and then we changed it to, you know, thirty all the way to the roundabout. So I think, and, and obviously that building, uh, yes, it was a school before, and then it went to be an, an office building, and now it's gone back to being somewhat, not really, not what it really is. But, um, but I mean, if this kind of like, you know, putting up some flashing lights, you know, I mean, we did that, um, for OLB on Cabot. You know, there's now a, a crossing there with flashing lights where people can hit, you know, across the road.
Cause I, I talked to a, to a policeman, and he said that he had to go sit over there, because there was too many people going speed through there when the kids were there. And sure, it's all on one side like it should be, but that doesn't stop kids from coming through, and, and there have been kids even up by Cleveland, that rolled off car wood, car hoods, so...
Right, yeah, I know. Um, here's another question.
I'll take care, I'll take care. We'll get signed up.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Look at that, something happened tonight, Mike.
I have another question, I got about three questions.
Oh, all right, go ahead.
Okay, second question is, uh, why can't we, uh, eliminate the signing up on Monday or Tuesday afternoon, so we can come and speak at these council meetings? Isn't that a violation of free speech?
You know, I don't know how that all works, that's why I'm doing this. This is why I wanted to do this. Have you felt free to speak tonight? I mean, that's what it's about. What can happen here is you bring it out, and then it can come to the council meeting that way too. Through me, or Anthony, or Laura, or Scott and Scott over there.
I, I, I would agree, I, with what you're saying, I mean, I, I think, uh, that rule got implemented because there was somebody that was, uh, you know, a detrimental situation with that, and so, with some restrictions put into place. But I think that's a question of the council bringing it up, and basically making, you know, passing, you know, that. I, I, I a hundred percent agree. I think that on a council meeting evening, you know, any member of the public should be able to, and, and as long as it's civil, you know, and you come to the podium, and you address the council with your name, that you're a resident of Fergus Falls, and that you should be able to speak.
And, you know, some people are nervous about that. Mike, I don't believe you would be nervous.
I have one other, I have two, two other questions for you.
Okay.
The second one, I wanna thank all the council members that are here, but I'm pretty disgusted that the mayor who lives two and a half blocks from me isn't here.
Well, you know, that's his choice. Yep.
He's supposed to address that, he's on a birthday party with his son in Minneapolis right now, and he was supposed to be here, but things got changed.
I'm glad he talked to you, Scott.
He called me, told me about that.
Yep. It would have been interesting to hear that, too.
Okay, my final question is, you know, we're building all these parks, we're redoing all these, we're building a, we're redoing DeLagoon, and we're doing all this up here. When are we going to bring some good jobs to pay like Ottertail Power did out of Woodlake Plan? Where are we going to get these $50,000, $200,000, $300,000 jobs, the health paper and stuff? We're building houses up along, and the regional treatment center, around there, 375,000. How many people that are retired or that work in this town can afford to buy them houses? Who can?
Yeah, Mike, I hear you, and that's, that's why we need to get some, some larger industry. And Lisa, if you want to make a comment, go ahead.
I'll speak to that a little bit. So it's common that people want higher paying jobs in a community. Right now in Ottertail County, there are over 1,000 job openings. So these are jobs that are going unfilled right now, anything from entry level on up to six, six-digit figure income for jobs at places potentially at Ottertail Power, Lake Region Healthcare. So it's not just, there's no silver bullet where you bring in some big tech company or some big manufacturer, and all of a sudden everybody's wages are going to go up, it doesn't always work that way.
Thank you, Lisa. I, I would like to make a comment, too. That can happen, because it did. I'm going to have my brother speak to that right now. Did you want to come up or not?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
I wasn't fine on speaking either, and I didn't dress for the occasion.
Look into the new one.
They're all taller than me. I'm Leon Gray, my mom is an older brother, and I worked for Ottertail Power last 10 years, I was area manager in the Bemidji, Crookston, and Fergus Falls area, that was my area to cover. And I've been involved with economic development for, I don't know, 25 years, from city council to economic development boards, to North Dakota State Chambers, to city chambers, whatever. And we'll get to Bemidji. We were having trouble, and you were there, getting things done, so as an economic development group, we decided to go on our own. And this is just food for thought for everybody here that's on that side of it. So we went on to all private donations from businesses, we didn't have the city involved at all. And why that was, is we could turn it around in a matter of days. If somebody needed something, we could do it. So that's, that's one thing that we did. The other thing we, the last four years there, we brought in about 700 jobs a year, and they were in 18 to $30 an hour range on those jobs. We had a shortage of workforce, decided, what are we going to do with that? So we mentioned Bemidji State University and the Northwest Technical Schools, we started our own jobs training program. And businesses came to us and said, "This is what we need, can you do it?" Well, we figured out a way to do it. So by the time I left, we had about 1,100 people went through the jobs training, 800 of them stayed in Bemidji as local residents, money back into the community. And so that was some of the stuff that we did. And the private donations, we had about 90 businesses that donated to us. We ran on about a $250,000 budget a year, and the city could be a part of it if they wanted, or they didn't have to, that was their choice, and they were a part of it, they donated to us. And then, what do you consider greater Fergus Falls? I hear that, but is that just right here in Fergus Falls, is that what it is? Yeah, okay. Up there, we called it Greater Bemidji, but we looked a 50-mile radius. So one of the other things we did was, there was a business, Team Industries in Bagley, they were losing workers because there was no healthcare right in town. So we met with Sanford, they said, "We can't do the capital money right now, but if you build it, we'll lease it from you." So we built the clinic in Bagley, they leased it from us, got a 10-year agreement, and at the 10 years, they can either pay us what it costs to build it, or they can lease it another 10 years. And they kept all their jobs in, in Bagley, which is a huge industry in Bagley. But in turn, our building that we had for Greater Bemidji, I mean, it was huge, the upper floor was taken over by that Team Industries, and they put 30 engineering jobs in that building. So they got what they wanted, we got what we wanted, we looked at the whole area. And, you know, I would think, you know, I know Barnesville, Berkner's, Pelican, Battle Lake, Underwood, all these, I think it'd be worth the time to meet with some of these and see where they're struggling with some businesses in their town. You're going to have some synergies there. And it will come out to be good for you, I know that.
Do you want to, just talk about Delta Dental?
Oh, yeah, we had, I was on the board there for nine years, and then I was on the executive board for five years, and then president two years. And my first year as president, our executive director, he was looking through the magazine and said, he called me up, he said, "Hey, there's a business here that wants to relocate 100 miles out of Minneapolis." He said, "Is it worth our time to go look at it?" I said, "Sure." He said, "Let's go do it." So we went, went there, talked to him, invited him to Bemidji, they came in, and by the end of the day, they kind of had their mind made up that they were going to be there. And they told us afterward, they said, "You know, we were just kind of come to town and do a kick off, kick the tires, and head out again." But he said, "No, this is a place for us." And they, they got 300 employees, and I don't know, I think it ended up being about a $5 million building, brand new. So, and those are good paying jobs, those were, at Delta Dental. So that's something, it can be done, got to be a little forceful once in a while, but it can be done. And the thing that we found was, we had people that were really good at finding money, and so we had a lot of money coming in from other sources, which helped greatly. And then on the board, which sounds like a lot, we had 28 members, but if you didn't perform, you weren't on the board after a year. So you had to have value to that board. So we had, I don't know, five or six bankers, they were all good at loaning and doing business on certain items. So one bank might be good at doing a hotel, or one helping a business out, and then you go to those, and that's where you go. So we already had a built-in financing kind of, which was really good, that kept a lot of people in town. And we had entrepreneurs, what else? The CEO, or president of the college, CEO of the hospital, I mean, we had all, we had all kinds, business downtown. And the last thing we were working on when I left, I retired, was looking at Chamber, Visitor's Bureau, the Business Downtown Organization, and Greater Bemidji under one umbrella. So then, when you come up with a plan, everybody's moving in the right direction, everybody's moving forward. You don't have the offshoot here and offshoot here, but it stays in, and then you have people off all those boards in one, in one, I don't know what you want to call it, greater board, and that's how your decisions get moved. But that's what we were working on when I left, I'm not sure where it's at now, but yeah.
Can I ask you a question? Except for labor force, what would you say is the biggest impediment to an outside business wanting to come to a community?
Some of it is facilities. You want to make sure you have some facilities of some type, or you have a plan to get that for them. So it's a, and when you first meet with them, that's one of the things you ask, is what are you looking for when you come here? You know, do you just need a building, do you just need an office? What are you looking for? And then you go from there, and then you reach out to everybody you got and see what you can come up with.
And in your experience, if there's a business from out of town that's searching for a new place, who do they look to talk to first when they get the idea that your town might be a possibility?
We had, we called it like a one-stop shop, and went to our executive director, and he would get the plan, and then he would call the people and say, "This is what we need, we need finance, we need that, da-da-da," and then it went out and got the work done on it. But we did a one-stop shop, we held their hand from the time they came into town until they went to a city council, got their permits, we followed all the way through until they had the ribbon cutting. And that's, that's what they liked, because there were times where businesses had missed a step and it got delayed, and you can't do that and so on.
Yeah, I think one of the issues that I've seen that come up is that there's so many different entities that have to be involved, and it's all, it seems like it's the responsibility of the person coming to town to figure out who that is.
Yeah.
They're getting different information from different people, and nobody's coordinating it so that, you know, people get so frustrated, they give up.
Yeah, yeah. So we found out that having that one person was, was the best thing for somebody coming into town. And then we guide them the way that they need to go, whether it's a workforce, whether it's Chamber, whatever you need.
Agreed.
Thank you, sit down.
Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Come in up there.
Yeah, you can come up here, yep, yep.
Yeah. I knew this was going to go the whole time. No, I'll go really quickly, because I don't... No, this is, this is very...
My name is Steve Shonig, and I'm an Ottertail Power employee, vice president of customer service. We work in economic development, like Leon mentioned, and actually, his predecessor is on the Bemidji board, so very familiar with Greater Bemidji, and everything that Leon has said is true. I think I just want to be clear on some things, when you're comparing it to Fergus Falls, there are distinct differences, and one of them is that Bemidji is a regional one economic development trade center, we are not. And so it's a lot different from a development perspective. And as far as area, Bemidji is, you know, covers the county in a sense, county money and such, which is quite a bit different. We have done the area view, like you said, it's a great idea. We talked about as a board, I'm on the board also, and we've talked very much about working with Pelican, working with others, and it's just different down here. They're distinct cities, and doesn't mean we couldn't, especially in landing a, you know, bigger business. Teams, example's a great one, Team Industries has facilities all over the place, and one example was their Bagley headquarters, they've got, you know, other facilities, and use of their launchpad was a fantastic project. So we'd love to do that, we're not precluded from doing that. So I just want to be clear, I think we've looked at everything very well from a greater Fergus Falls perspective, and we're open to ideas. I don't think we need to be doing that tonight, but certainly catch one of our board members and let us know. We think we're doing a very good job. As far as one-stop shop, very good question, every community tries to do that, and we want to do that also, and actually, Nataya and Lisa are both here, they work together all the time. And so we very much so try to work together as much as we can. Is it perfect? No, it's not. But it's a small enough town, we don't see big gaps there at all. So our goal is these larger companies, like Delta Dental, fantastic example of pulling something out of the Twin Cities, moving it up here, we want to do that. And actually, every day, that group, Greater Fergus Falls, is working on trying to do those types of deals. They don't get into the press because a lot of them are private, and in a small town like Fergus, Bemidji, it's the same. If you get one large deal every five years, that's a success, it really is. Meanwhile, you posture yourself, you do what you can to help the existing businesses, but to think, you know, there's a problem or an issue because of something that we're doing, because we're not getting, you know, a flow of these larger businesses, that's just not the case. I know you're not saying that, Leon, so. We have copied the Bemidji model a lot, in fact, they're sick of me talking about it. So I think a lot of it fits this well, but not everything, so I just want to be clear. So, any questions, you can let us know.
Thank you, Steve. Just a couple of things I want to wind it up here pretty soon, just a comment, too. There's a, and I don't, I think we could maybe say that there might be something big coming into town? Nataya, is that true, or, you know, can that be talked about or not, or?
We are always exploring opportunities.
Okay, good. With that being said, I do know that those people came to Fergus, they weren't sought out. From what, what our meeting was, that's what I was told.
It's not the case, Al.
Okay, but that's what Nataya had mentioned to me, that...
Yeah, there's just a lot of disputation.
Right. I just, I just want to make sure that, hey, we got it, we want to get something going. And thank you for your comment. Wally wanted to talk one more time here, and then I have one quick question that I didn't get to yet, I found it yet, I've been hanging on to it. Wally, go ahead.
Wally Cool, Third Ward, First Precinct since 1969. And I've seen a lot of few, a lot of things going on here, especially with the Regional Treatment Center. And I'm on the, I am a conspiracy theorist on a lot of things, as well as a troublemaker. So, here goes. I have a feeling that somewhere along the line, somebody got, got to that Regional Treatment Center when it closed and put a hold on anything that was going on there, and piecemeal has now started to let things go. And to hitchhike on what Mike said earlier about the $300,000 to $400,000 houses being built on there, that's part of the step that they're looking at. They don't want anything happening to it, whoever they are, and they're waiting to get their mitts on everything else by chopping here, chopping there, so that it's down to one little piece that is the shrine. And then they will start putting in their big, expensive things there. We could have had a lot of different things happening here, like the library could have been put up there, and a number of different things, a hotel, other things could have been put up there, too. A starter unit for customers, for people that wanted to do businesses here until they got started, could have been put up there. All of those things were nixed over the years. We needed, we desperately need to have a place for some of the homeless people, they could have been put up there, too. Nope, nothing. So somebody is still holding the reins to keep this thing going, and it certainly is not me, and I don't know who it could be, but that needs to be dealt with. And being that that part is in the Third Ward, I'd like to see it happen, and I'd like to see a lot of these things happen, Lake Alice and various other things like that. I think it's been a very good meeting, you've got one more thing to do here. So, thank you.
One last question, sorry I didn't get to it sooner. It has to do with TIF. Will council members who hold accounts at FM Bank be able to vote on TIF? I don't know the legality of that or not.
Andrew, do you though?
Might have to have that one for Rolf.
If they have a financial interest in the decision of the council, they should abstain from acting on that. I guess that's up for every individual member to determine whether or not they have a conflict or a financial gain of those decisions. So I guess I'm not sure how somebody that would hold an account at a bank would financially benefit from that decision personally, but I guess if the council would have thought that was a conflict, they'd have to abstain from that.
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
I'll be directed at me because I am a customer of the bank.
Okay, I don't, I'm rolling it, but...
And I've done business at that bank for 35 years.
Yep.
I have no holding with that bank. I have no hold in with that bank at all. As a matter of fact, I've changed ownership here the last seven years probably. And so I don't believe, and I talked to Rolf about it, I don't believe I have any problem with that at all voting for it. It's about the demolition of the building, not about the building itself. So, anyway, that's...
That's part of it.
Something, if there was something I couldn't do, I would not vote for it, but I already talked to Rolf.
Sure, okay.
On a side note, right now that vote on that TIF has been table for right now.
I believe...
Mike, did you have one more thing to say? I just want to say, it is eight o'clock, you guys. I just would like...
Just make sure you set another date.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, what do you guys feel about this, or what do you think the community is gonna want? You want to try to do this once a month, or once every two months? Because this is a great turnout for a first meeting. I mean, this is crazy, how well this was, how this was attended. Pardon?
Be the practice of the place, we'll be there next time.
So, you know, we thought, and, and like I said, Andrew was so kind, and Lynn, to let us use, you know, make this available for this. You know, people's space, right. Yeah, Mike?
Everything that you've going to answer tonight, are you gonna take that all to the council?
Yeah, I've got the, well, some of them, I don't know where they went. Who's got it? Mike, or you got them? Yeah, yeah.
And other than council minutes, are you going to have some type of venue where you can answer back to us as to those questions that couldn't be answered?
Yeah, I think, it's a little tough, because I'm new to the council, you know? I haven't had a lot of past experience, and that's why it was nice to have...
I'm hopefully speaking out of turn here, and I know that not everybody in the room is a Facebook fan or whatnot.
Right.
But could a page be started for this panel meeting on Facebook?
Not by me.
Those questions that you have on your note card are there...
Right.
So that people could input those questions without necessarily showing to the meeting that night.
Right.
And then, at that same time, whether city council wants to respond to it, or whoever wants to respond to it, some type of educated response can come back.
Right. And I think that's what we could do, we can work on that. You know, I'm not the computer whiz, like all of you are. I, I carry a flip phone right now.
I can help with that on our city...
Okay, there you go, perfect. So Jean will do that, help with that, that's perfect. And thanks for the, yeah, Mike?
One other question, are, this fall, are we gonna harvest wild rice down, down on Mills, down the, and the park here with all the rice down there, or what's gonna happen?
I have no idea. I'm busy sanding minnows.
One quick question.
Yeah.
So, if we talked about the water park here, and we, not everybody knows the location that we were talking about, who's gonna go to the city attorney to find out if we can do a petition and then go about to see if we want to have another vote on the location of it?
I, I can definitely ask about it.
Yeah, because it sounds, I remember from the ballot, do you or do you not want, you know, the aquatic park and stuff, but it didn't say where. And I know, I'm not sure, Fergus Falls, people that would not want trees taken down, like our friend back there.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, and I can, I can talk to Rolf about it.
The language didn't say it was at Neuer's Park.
Roosevelt Park?
It was very specific where it was. So it was a yes or no kind of question. It was like, do I vote, do you want an aquatic center in Neuer's Park, or do you not?
Roosevelt, same. And Pete, you had one more question, too.
I just wanted to comment to you, because you said one of our pre-letting meetings, and I, I don't know what, in winter, but when the construction season starts, the tourism and all that stuff, I think a month would be the longest you'd want to go, because issues keep coming up, and, and sometimes a month is a long time.
Yeah, so you think once a month?
I think so.
I mean, what do you, some other ideas? I mean, I mean, what do you guys think?
Once a month.
Okay. What we should try to do is, and I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm gonna be really selfish on this, Wednesday nights, because I'm not on call on Wednesday nights. And, so...
It's a whole time, you can't die.
I know, but that happens. So Andrew, I think maybe what we should do is look at, if there's some availability one more time, you know, at least here, Jean, on a Wednesday night of next month, maybe in the middle of the month, if we can, you know, it's the fifteenth now, maybe, whatever the middle of the month is next. So we'll get some flyers out again. As far as setting an exact date right now, I don't know if we can, because we have to look at some other calendars, I think.
Maybe you'd want to include some of the Greater Fergus Falls people next time, so they could have some input also.
Whoever wants to come would be great. And, and I don't know it all, you guys, but we got to start someplace, we got to visit, and I think this was a great meeting.
I was just gonna say, somebody said quarterly, but if we met monthly, it doesn't mean that the people that are here tonight have to come to every meeting.
No, not at all.
Different people coming.
Oh, yeah.
And they maybe don't want to wait a whole quarter, the whole summer will go by, they can say, what are you doing over here?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so.
One other question, did, do you have more wins in your high school career racing than your boy, than your brother does points?
No.
Basketball?
No.
Okay, just checking.
No. It's...
I'll be there next time. Thanks, you guys.
You need help with anything else?
No.
I just gotta get the rest of these things.
Thanks, Joe.